Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee Meeting of June 18th, 2025. Reminder that we are being taped and will be shown on WHC-TV. So if everybody would please rise with me to say, "Fledge." Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a couple people for public comment. So Jen, you want to come up, please? And just say your name and your address, please, Jen.
Jennifer Roback, 879 Bedford Street, Whitman. I want to first thank the committee for all that you do for our schools and our families. I truly appreciate your service. I know that it's something you donate and that you're not getting paid for. That being said, I'm deeply concerned about the recent cuts approved at town meeting. While I understand the town has spoken, I continue to struggle with how education is weighed against other departments in this town. Education is not simply another line item on a balance sheet. It is the foundation of our children's future. Highly qualified teachers, not software or minute fillers, are what truly makes the difference for our students. These are not short-term inconveniences; they are decisions with long-term consequences. As supports are reduced, more students will fall behind and require costly interventions, assuming we even have the budget to provide them later. I speak not only as a community member, but as a parent. One of my children receives special education services and others in the pathway programs at the high school that was only implemented a couple of years ago. The third is in the elementary schools. All have benefited from the supports and resources within our schools, but it hasn't always been easy. For example, when I advocated for spelling services for my child, I was told, "It's simply not taught." My child still struggles with this today in an issue that has followed her from elementary school and will likely continue into her adulthood. Now, thankfully, phonics and spelling have been reintroduced into the elementary school. But with these current cuts, how long will that last? Will these essential programs be the first to go again? I listened carefully to the discussions at the town meeting. I understand that we all rely on vital services like emergency response and public safety. I've had to access them myself. But cuts to education impact far more than a moment in time; they affect an entire generation of students. And now, we're looking at instituting a $500 per sport user fee. While I understand the concept of user fees, we must also recognize the burden this places on working families. For many students, sports are not only an activity; they're a pathway to scholarships and college opportunities. In our case, this fee would exceed even what the override would have cost us. Our family may now have to limit our daughter's participation based solely on finances. What's more troubling is that this fee applies only to students attending our district school. While those who attend South Shore Vocational School or the Aggies are not asked to pay comparable fees. Why is that? This is not only inequitable, it's unfair. If we're serious about shared responsibilities, we must reexamine our agreements with those schools and ensure that Whitman Hansen students are not placed at a disadvantage simply for staying in our own home schools. We don't charge ambulance fees when someone needs emergency care. There is a fee, but it's not in an abundance. They're not raising their fees because of a cut to the town. We don't charge a user fee when someone calls the police for help. So why are we going to charge our students for the chance to participate in something that supports their development, well-being, and future? Many of our students these days are dealing with mental health issues, and running on the fields is where they get better. I urge you to reconsider this dramatic increase in user fees. Once implemented, such charges rarely go away. We risk creating a system where only families with the means can afford to let their children thrive. I know these are difficult times; none of us takes this lightly. But please, let's be clear-eyed about what's at stake and find a path forward that doesn't ask our children to pay the price for a failed override. Thank you again for your time and for standing up for our students, and I believe we can all do better.
Thank you very much, Jen. Okay, Kathleen O'Tina.
Good evening, Kathleen O'Tina, 344 Washington Street, Whitman, Chair of the Whitman Finance Committee. I appreciate the words shared by the previous speaker. I'm here tonight to reluctantly thank you for the work you did in coming to a balanced budget with the towns that the two towns can support. Having grandchildren in the school system, I am devastated by the cuts in the classroom, especially the interventionists who have been eliminated. This was not a cut I know you considered easily, but cutting $2 million from your budget was not, there's not a lot of room to play with. I'm also concerned about the user fees, but I want to acknowledge the work, the hard decision that you folks made, whether you voted for or against the budget cuts, and the superintendent and his staff for working with the towns. Hopefully, fiscal '27, though I don't expect it to be any easier, will provide us with continued cooperation and opportunities to anticipate these cuts before the last minute at town meeting. It worked out better in fiscal '25, if you can believe it or not. Fiscal '26, we just did not have the time between the failed overrides, and for us, the Whitman Town Meeting was 25 days later. I look forward to continue working with you, and again, I share the sympathies of the woman who spoke before me. Our kids and those families are paying an unfair burden. It's not called a tax, but it's a tax on a subset of citizens who don't deserve it. Things have been eliminated in the past; I'm not going to enumerate them. They haven't come back yet. I will enumerate one: middle school foreign language. We haven't had it for a very long time. I look forward to working with you as the Chair of the Whitman Finance Committee and hope that we can find a better pathway forward in fiscal '27. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, then next is approval of minute meetings, meeting minutes. Pat was here, on May 21st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, additions, deletions, submissions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous? Okay, well...
I'll roll right into it.
Roll right into it, Jen, listening.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you said. It's heartfelt, and I understand. As a former principal athlete and guy who's been with the MIA since 2001, I get it. So I'm speaking on behalf of the high school athletic program. Mr. Rogers is away in Vegas in the tournament, poker tournament, and I told him if he wins, he's going to solve our problems today. But he and I have been in close contact this week, so you have a proposal from him that is outdated already, because we worked on a new proposal between Monday and this morning to lower that fee structure to what is higher than it was, but more amenable, I think, in a bad situation. The other thing I have to roll out with, and I'm going to talk about town meeting, we still don't have a budget. Hanson's meeting, and I'm going to say it five or six times during this meeting, is the 25th of June at 6:30 here in the auditorium or in the John McEwen Performing Arts Center. 100 people are needed for a quorum. It's imperative, imperative, imperative that we get a quorum and hopefully pass a budget so that Mr. Marshall doesn't have to fill out umpteen documents for the state, which they gave us the workload yesterday of what we have to present to them before the 1st of July. So we're working on that. The user fee proposal, although not great, is different from the $500. When we were looking at $500, I'm still reducing the athletic budget by $250,000, but through some fundraising and what Mr. Rogers thinks we can do based upon students, I'm looking at a $375 first sport, $250 for a second, and $100 for a third, with a family cap of $1,200. So if you have three students playing three sports, it's family cap of $1,200. Ice hockey will go from 200 to 400 for varsity only, and the outrageous cost of ice time right now might even still minimize the amount of ice time they can purchase. That should get him close to that $250,000 without cutting any sports. We won't really know that until their first meeting where all the athletes get together, they meet with their coaches, and we can get some enrollment numbers. But if he doesn't hit that number, it's up to him to figure out how we're going to run certain sports. And we did this back prior to me coming here in 2010, prior to Mr. Rogers becoming an athletic director. Some sports, I believe in 2008, were eliminated due to the budget. We don't want to do that. I think sports are invaluable. Everything extracurricular in our district is invaluable for our students that don't love academics, that don't love coming to school. I've seen both sides. I've seen high-achieving students do really well in athletics, and I've seen low-achieving students do really well in athletics, and the only reason they both come to school is because of athletics or drama or band. So we want to minimize the cost, but there has to be an impact felt district-wide due to the lack of an override and the fact that right now we're looking at a $1.75 million deficit from the proposed budget. We've eliminated teaching staff. We're at three reduction in force folks, people that don't have jobs right now. I've been able to place everybody else in district, and I've actually been lucky enough to be able to roll out and start hiring some folks. I made an offer for an English position, and I have someone coming in for our chemistry position on Friday that have been very low, which is great, because they're first-year teachers, and it's saving us some money. But we've remained at the fee structure that Bob had listed before since, I believe, 2008. For us to make the budget balance, I'm encouraging the committee to increase this for this year with Bob's plea to me on the phone from Vegas this morning saying, "If the budget looks better, we want to reduce those fees." And I said, "I hope." I know I have retirements next year, and with, like Mrs. O'Tina said, if we can get ahead of the game, we will. But the district's felt a $1.75 million budget hit this year. We've cut the interventionists at the middle level right now. Hopefully, the cuts that I had presented to you before were $2 million. I'm looking for a $250,000 reprieve to bring back maybe some folks in some vital areas that we eliminated, like foreign language at the high school. I eliminated one of those teachers. Like the middle school librarians, like curriculum that you folks had talked to me about, again, saying that we're going to hold true to what we used to teach or what we didn't teach. When George and I got here, we had no curriculum. We want to boost that curriculum to make sure that it's being taught, and our elementary building blocks are there. So I'm encouraging you, based upon the conversations I had with Bob. He also wants to establish his own type of scholarship for students who can't afford to pay or can't work out a way to work it off. Currently, right now, folks can't afford the user fee. Moms, dads, siblings, grandmas take tickets. So we would normally pay somebody $50 a ticket; they work off their user fee like that. We might have to elaborate that a little bit more, and we do have some folks in town that have donated money in the past for the scoreboard, for certain things. But if we can establish a scholarship account, almost like what we used to call a sunshine fund, for students who can't afford to participate, we don't want to let them, we don't want to prohibit them from participating due to finances, and we also have to make sure we are collecting the finances, which brings into that policy, which I amended a little bit, Mr. Offe, around collections. So I don't want to ever exclude a student for not paying a bill in the original presentation or proposal was a student couldn't participate in postseason play. And that's off the table for me. A student won't be allowed to play the next sport without either working something out with the athletic director as a payment plan or payment in full. So it's not going to pull a team apart in postseason. We do have students that don't pay their bills. We do have parents, and I was saying out loud that I've had to go to court because checks are bounced, too. That's not something in our purview. We don't have the staff to go to court to get money. So we hope that folks pay their tab, and what happens usually is when a senior's getting ready to graduate, we don't withhold the diploma; we withhold the ceremony until your bill is paid. Nobody's ever not walked across that stage because of a bill. We've always worked it out, even if they've had to pay September afterwards. But the cost sometimes is in the $50,000 to $60,000 over time, because people aren't paying, they don't pay for a trip, they don't pay for a book, they don't pay for a Chromebook, because things are tight. So we will have to be more accountable to making sure those folks pay so that we can make sure sports are running and we can pay the bill when the bus company gives us an invoice, when the referees give us an invoice. Things are also expensive, and we do have a trainer that's paid by signature, but we pay $50,000 of that. Ice time's expensive, and travel costs are expensive. And to budget now, if you haven't been following sports in the Commonwealth, the MIA has done a different playoff system. You don't necessarily just play in your locality. We've played in Gateway Regional out in Western Mass. It's a bus trip for a prelim game that you win by 70 goals in field hockey, and it's a three-hour ride back, and the bus trip is expensive. But 10 years ago, it used to be used to play within your own, at least South Shore, North Shore, Metro West, but it's expanded. So the travel costs have really increased quite a bit. So again, I'm open to questions, but I'm looking at the new fee structure as something that we can put into place for the fiscal year '26 with a revisitation during the budget process of fiscal '27 to try to lower that. In 2010, when I became principal, I wanted to try to lower fees. That has never happened. We've never been in a good fiscal place in this district. And hopefully, we can modify, maybe never eliminate, but get back to where we were in letting all students participate without having a monetary burden over their head, or as Ms. O'Tina said, a tax, really, to participate.
Stephanie?
So a couple of questions. So I see ice time is something that we're charging for. Do students get charged for pool time and gymnastics time also in addition to the fee that they're paying?
So I believe, that's a good question. Let me hold that question, let me see if I can find that, because I have the bill. I don't believe so. I believe ice time is something different. I'm just saying, that's, I don't believe when we swim at Middleborough, because we're a co-op team, I don't know if it's a split cost or just as we're a team, there's a set cost to rent the pool. I don't know if there's an additional charge or if it's just built into the budget for that pool time. I'm not sure.
Second question is, is there a reason, when, like, obviously, cross-country doesn't have the same expenses, like with referees and things like the equipment, why do they charge, why do they charge the same amount as a kid who plays football?
That's a question we've done that across the board. We haven't delineated between this sport brings in money, this sport doesn't bring in any money. That's not something we've done as a district since user fees were enacted, except for, with the exception of the sports that are more expensive, which is hockey.
Because things like football, we charge it for games and stuff like that for attendance at those things.
We charge, right now, we charge at night games at basketball, football, soccer night. We don't charge for baseball, softball. So there's, and when he does charge, it's because there's a crowd that's going to come. Usually, you're not getting some crowds at certain games.
Right. And then my third and last question is, have we figured out what the offset is? Because obviously, if some kids can't pay the extra fee, you're going to lose students in some of these activities, so I'm just wondering...
That's the challenge in August. So when Bob and I spoke, I said, "If we go here, if we don't raise the revenue and fees, what sport's going to go?" And you look at, again, 2008, when there were certain sports that were eliminated, whether it be a freshman-level sport, whether it be a varsity-level sport, that's costly with low turnout. I'm not sure, and I don't have those in front of me, because we will gather that data at his athletic night meeting when all the coaches meet, and if those fees are enacted, who's going to sign up for, you know, our smaller sports, our swimming, our gymnastics, valuable for the students that participate, but not high? Girls' hockey, our co-op hockey team, I think we have three players on that team this year. We're still spending, you know, we used to, when we first started co-op in 10 years ago, we dominated, we were the bigger party in that co-op. Now we're on the other side. So offering opportunities, and we also have to make sure that if we do eliminate any sports, we're still in compliance with Title IX with equal opportunity for all students.
And then, I'm sorry, I'm just curious. So I know a few years ago, students who did the swimming actually had to carpole and pay their way to get, so is that still the case?
So students were driving themselves to swimming because buses weren't available. And I don't know if it's now by choice that they want to carpole, because it's easier for them than getting a bus, coming back and forth, and they can just leave from the pool, since it's, I still believe it's in Middleborough.
It might be an offset, though, of like the pool, paying for the pool time, having to pay for buses, so that...
But I mean, part of that was lack of, I mean, drivers are there now, but three years ago, we had no driver, so it was like scrambling to figure out what we were doing. I think there's, I don't want to say a plethora, but transportation was not an issue this year.
Okay, I have a couple of things. So first of all, I think all of this is gross, and I totally agree with the public comment. However, I think, and I wrote it down, the override failed in Whitman by 1,000 votes and in Hanson by 700, 400.
Yep, it's closer.
So we're not really left with a choice, which is really unfortunate, and I have three kids who I would imagine are going to be three sport athletes in a few years when they're here, and looking at this, I don't know how I would afford it either. So one of the things, and I can't remember what it is called, but if we are going to set up, where Bob Rogers is going to set up a scholarship fund, it needs to be in an account that generates interest so that it builds every year, and then my suggestion would be partial scholarship. So if a student can pay X amount, like, it's not like covering an entire, because then you're going to wipe out that scholarship fund, and it's not going to be worth it. I can find out what it is, but like Easton Youth Baseball raised like $10,000 this spring using it, and it's almost like a GoFundMe for sports. You know, that's something to consider and think about. My concern is collecting the money, because if you look on, and I just have the printout, because I can't get on my computer, it says that they currently have $114,000 in outstanding collections. That is the red flag for me, because if we're going to be raising user fees, but we're not actually collecting them, then that's not going to fix this budget. So I have a couple of suggestions. So I think that forgetting about not letting a student play in the postseason, just like you have to have an approved physical, you have to have a plan to pay your fee before you try out. So if you can't afford it, you know this prior to tryouts, right? The family knows it, the student knows it. There needs to be a conversation with the AD and the family about how that payment structure is going to happen. Maybe Bob makes like contracts with families and stuff, right? And then they've got it, and now the kid can play, right? And that kind of solves that issue, I think, because all of us are, I mean, forgive me if I'm speaking for everybody, but I think that's a concern that I have, that a student isn't able to participate. But you can't say, "Sure, you can play. Oh, wait, you're just a freshman, you went to homecoming, you went to the prom, and we never got your money, and now that budget is underwater," right? So that would be my first suggestion, is to, just like you treat physicals, and I see Bob tweet about it all the time, like, you need to make sure you have your paperwork in order before you can try out, right? That needs to be part of that paperwork. Secondly, you need to hold the fees over their head. So if they purchase tickets for homecoming, if they purchase tickets for prom, at my school, we have it, and it's like all your old materials, right? You owe a book, you got to find that book before you can buy a homecoming ticket, you got to, you know, saddle up. And again, if that's something, and, you know, when I was an advisor years ago, I was floored, because we had just started doing it, and there were kids who had enormous balances as seniors. Because if we're going to raise fees, but we're not going to collect the money, this isn't going to solve our budget problem. So we've got to have something, and Bob says it here, we make getting prom tickets contingent on fee payments, right? And then I think the last thing is that scholarship fund. I sort of, I don't know, Stephanie, if this is where you were going, but my concern is, you know, we do know that a sport like football costs a lot more than a sport like girls' tennis, right? Or boys' tennis, whatever, tennis. And so are we, by having these fees, the same for those sports? And this might be a conversation further down the road with Bob, like, could there be a structured fee? You know, like, I have a hard time being like, yes, you can play football for $375, but it actually costs us this much money to pay the coach and all the assistants, and we have to have an EMT onsite, and we have to have these sorts of things. But for tennis, you just go out and, you know, you're basically officiating yourselves, and the biggest cost is getting there, right? I don't know if that would be, you know, if the committee has an appetite for that, but if we're looking at, we don't want, we don't want these sports to die, I think is my issue, and a sport like cross-country or, are cheaper sports, right? I think that basketball is more expensive. You need to have the lights on in the school, you need to pay the officials. Hockey, we all know, is more expensive. Football is very expensive, insurance alone. You know, looking at maybe a fee structure for that, but again, I don't know, if we're going to have fees, I just think looking at that so that that might dissuade lack of participation in that way, so.
Question with football, they do collect money to watch the game.
So does that money, like the revenues from tickets, go to the football program, or does it go to the general?
General fund. So all of our ticket collections goes to the general athletic revolving account?
General athletic revolving account.
Right, right, right. So this $507.50 that's in the budget, that money collected from ticket sales goes into that?
So my budget that is in the book is really for coaches.
Yep.
All the other things come from gate receipts and user fees. So all the other expenses, and I believe, off the top of my head, it's about $325,000 to run everything. Bob pays buses, ice time, everything else outside of what's in, which contractual, which are salaries, and certain equipment, not a lot, because we don't pay for equipment and we don't pay for uniforms, comes from revolving, that revolving account, which is gate fees and user fees.
Okay, so the argument then, I guess, would be that football can be the same price because they are making money to sort of offset that.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
Karen?
I had a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I think I'm going to start with my comments. So Jen, I apologize, I missed your last name. Roback, thank you. I so appreciated your comments, and they're so heartfelt, and I, also having children in the district who are active in sports feel this, and to Hillary's point, it is gross that we're having to have this conversation. I hate that we're having to have this conversation. I hate that our last meeting, we had to talk about eliminating 23 positions in the district. None of these conversations are what I think the people around this table would have wanted or advocated for. I do also echo, I've been putting a lot of thought into, over the past several months, into the inequities around funding the Whitman Hansen Regional School District and the vocational regional districts. Both, we've talked at length about per people spending and how much higher it is for those, how these 23 positions that were eliminated, this $1.7 to $2 million reduction of our budget is solely out of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District budget and not out of the vocational budgets, because we do not have the leverage as two communities, as part of a much larger regional district, to kind of call the shots, for lack of a better word, in those circumstances. And I think it is really, really sad and discouraging that the majority of the student population in these two towns, who are serviced by the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, are the ones that are having the highest impact for all of these kind of decisions that are made. I think it's incredibly inequitable and very, very discouraging. I also, and I've said this in a previous meeting, I feel in particular that the group of students that's at the high school right now is a cohort that has been hit time and time again by reductions and cuts and large class sizes and lack of foreign language and lack of music programs and all sorts of other things. It's just, it's been an unfortunate series of events for them, and so it also pains me a lot to have to have this conversation specifically, because it will impact those kids more than anyone else in the district and their families. And I don't know if there are other places that we can discuss fees that are not specifically for high school activities to potentially offset or balance some of that, so it isn't hit hardest by that population. You know, I have twins, so I, like I said, I paid twice, two times full day K, full price, I paid, you know, and I'm looking at... full price. I paid, you know, and I'm looking at, you know, they're playing two to three sports each. So that's a lot of money for our family. Um, and I, I don't love the idea of it, but I also feel, and we've had conversations about this, that our, our staff, um, we've talked, you know, our, our staff and our, um, administration has done a lot with very little for a really, really long time. And, um, going into this override vote, I, I worry that because our staff is so, so great, that, as we've said, the doors are going to open, kids are going to have us, have, are going to have teachers, they're going to go to class, they're going to play sports, they're going to have activities, things are still going to happen. And maybe not you and me, but like the community at large, it's going to seem like business as usual. And they've called our bluff and that we have, see, like we really, there really didn't impact anything. And it, and I think that, that some of this like is, is an unfortunate natural consequence to the decisions made by the voters in these communities. And it pains me to say that. I wish, I wish that the, that we could, um, communicate that we just, we can't get blood out of a stone, right? So it's like, we need to generate this money somehow. So I think this is a conversation that I am very reluctantly, um, agreeing to have. Um, I appreciate Jeff, the efforts that you and Bob have gone through to try, try to minimize that and cut it back from original projections. Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, to Hillary's point, I'm wondering a little bit about, again, thinking about full day K. And I remember at the time there was kind of a like income based fee structure if you were, if you like couldn't afford it. So I wonder if there's some sort of parallel structure we can offer for programs just to kind of like, again, keep people, um, you know, to the, the people that, that have the least amount to pay have the most opportunity of accessing the scholarship funds, whatever they may be. Um, I also know that like with full day K, even when I paid full price, there was a payment plan, like a 10 months, you, you get it automatically deducted out of your paycheck every whatever. And maybe there's some sort of like benefit to doing that. Like maybe you get $50 off if you pay, agree to pay every month over 10 months by auto withdrawal. I don't know how that would work. I don't know if that's even a system we've set up, but just like a thought. Um, I'm curious about, um, I know that a lot of our high school athletes volunteer at camps for the elementary, middle school students. I know that's often used to offset some team trips, but I'm wondering if that could potentially also be an opportunity for them if they need to, to cover some of their user fees. Um, and then my last question, my, I guess my, I guess I really only one question after all. Sorry. My other question was, I know, I saw the mention here about unified sports not currently having any user fees. I would advocate for that to continue. Um, my question just is, is that for, um, for, uh, general ed and special ed students that participate, or is it just for our special education?
So right now, the unified piece is for both.
For everybody. Okay. That's great. Thank you.
And I would concur. I, I, you know, Bob had put that. I want participation in that.
Agreed.
Um, and it's, it's, it's a little different than competing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Steve?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so I know this, Dan, well over maybe two years ago, put together that list of accounts in the district. And I know it's not all for sport. We have a whole array of monies that are out there somewhere. We know what they are and it's very organized. Um, is that being looked at? Can we look at that? And obviously, anything, one thing that when I was on the FinCon, I always, that's 20 years ago now, but what I, what I always looked forward to was monies that we have in certain accounts that can be rolled back because like it was an article for repairing, I don't know, I'm just going to say chills and we didn't use all the money and we, we roll back, it either went back to the towns, one town, the other, or it went right back into the district. Um, so that's just some things, and, and doesn't need answers right now. And the other one was, I, I know Mr. Rogers talked about, um, like premium parking fees. And I don't know if that took off, how it worked, if it still looked like.
I don't, I don't know if that was Mr. Rogers or Mr. Small back in the day when he wanted to charge $100 for a football parking pass. That sounds more like Fred.
Okay.
Because Fred bought a premium parking pass for football games. So.
Okay, premium parking, okay.
Yeah. So, so we're going to look at, at every opportunity to give kids an opportunity to play. I don't like user fees. I, I don't want user fees at all. I don't believe in them. When I was at West Bridgewater, we didn't have. You know, I came here, we got them. And we try to do the best we can with students. I have never had this type of budget burden before in the 15 years I've been here. The, as a principal, we got whacked quite a bit. There were always the threats of cutting sports. I am not the guy to say, I'm going to cut sports and then not cut sports and make it happen. And this is something that I think we need to do. Uh, and if we can pull back, we will as much as we can. If things get better, if we get a windfall from the state this summer, if Bob wins poker, you know what I mean? Uh, I'm, I'm joking, half joking. If somebody makes a donation, we got a donation last week or last meeting.
We know.
I'm, I'm reaching out to that person to see if that can be part of our scholarship fund. Not just necessarily academic, but students in need overall. Um, you know, off topic, I, I had a student come to me about starting a food pantry. Just a come in, come out, we're going to put it here because we have students that don't have enough food. We have that population in this building. So we have people looking out. So I think we're going to try to give every, every student, every opportunity to be successful, both in the classroom and, uh, in the, in the, in the performing arts center and on the field. I hesitated to put a user fee into extracurriculars. That might be something we talk about later, but I don't have data to see who would actually participate then versus students that are, you know, in band. I, I know my band kids, but I might not do band because I have to pay 50 bucks or whatever. So I think we're looking at that. I think this scratches the surface of maybe a, a, a ladder a little bit about how much different people pay or for different sports. We can start looking at that. Hopefully next year again, if things are better, we go back to the system that seems to have worked a little, even though we don't want to charge. Um, but at this point, I, that deficit, I don't want to reduce any more staff. In fact, I want to try to get students back. Um, the one thing I will say, and I said this last June, uh, at Hanson Town, prior to Hanson Town meeting again, if I go into a 112, sports, all sports are off the table for September. I can't house a football team and I, when I'm going to riff another 24 teachers. You know, and somebody said, well, that's not part of the budget. I said, that's just in the 112. It's because that's not real. So I'm just saying that now. I, I, I've lived by the fact that I've worked under folks that says, we're just going to cut freshman sports. And then all of a sudden, everybody comes to a school committee meeting and there's 1,000 people here and we have freshman sports. We don't have the money for it, but we have freshman sports. So we'll work through that. Um, but I think we need this to start to establish. And again, I've heard, and I think members around this table have heard, you'll just figure it out anyway. There won't be any real cuts. This is real, like 1.7 is real. I, last year was a million. We got by, by using some, for some free cash and some different things. We got by. This year, I can't get by.
Stephanie?
I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. You never looked to the right.
Well, I did.
I know the right, I'm in this corner. If I was taller, maybe, but okay.
You can throw something at it.
No, I don't even know. Thanks. No, um, okay. I hate this, of course. Like this stinks. It absolutely stinks. But it's a position we're in. We have to kind of do this, more or less, right? But, you know, like Hillary's, Hillary said, if we're going to be the bad guy and do this, we have to be the bad guy the whole way through. Cause there has to be consequences to pay because if kids, you know, find out, hey, I didn't pay, nothing happened, you know? Nobody's going to pay. And I think we, so there has to be some type of actionable consequence, but I would like to see that it doesn't get there. So will there be like a hardship application for every?
That's what we, we.
Everybody will be open to this, right? And I like Hillary's idea of it being a staggered, you know, if you can afford 100, you pay 100. So, and will there be fundraising? I know there's already fundraising, but if we could come up with some more fundraising? And, uh, if there was like an open GoFundMe, straight, never closed GoFundMe that's constantly advertised, you know, I'll be the first to donate today. I'll donate tonight, you know? So I think, as bad as this is, I do think there's ways that we'll get through this. I'd absolutely think we do. And I do think the town will come together and donate. Because there are people who can.
Yes.
Um, so I want to echo everyone saying this is gross and I don't like it. Um, I do, I mean, a lot of my questions, I think, are the changes in the, in the, um, the increases, um, alleviate some of that for me, some of my questions. But there was one thing that, um, so I have one kind of quest, boy, two questions. So one, this is now just a general knowledge thing. I was looking at the, um, the, the 26 budget, um, book and in FY '24, the athletic budget was 400,000, 402,000. This year was 217. So I was just wondering what happened between '24 and '25 and now the proposed 26 was 507. So I was wondering what happened, you know?
So that line was cut last year. It, it should have been four, four and a quarter.
It was accidentally.
It was accidentally cut.
Accidentally cut?
Yes.
We still paid the coaches, yeah.
Okay. Oh, so that we had, okay.
We still ran sports, but that line, we had to make up that line. That's why we ended up freezing the budget early on this year.
Um, all right. So that, because that just seemed like I'm like.
It was an error.
It was an error. Okay. All right. I wasn't sure if it was something like, like nobody showed up for lacrosse.
No, it's, it's consistently gone up, you know, three, four percent.
Yeah, that's, that's why it just, it just stuck out to me when I was looking at it this morning. Um, and I guess my, so my second question, um, is if, if the vote tonight is to accept these, um, these user fee increases, what is the outreach to the community going to be, to, to the school community going to be? When is that going to happen? Because I think that the, the sooner you can let families know about it, the more they can plan for it as opposed to the kids showing up August 28th and then finding out that they're, you know, that instead of being 250, it's now 3, it's 375 or whatever.
So as soon as you vote whatever, I have an email going out reminding people of town meeting on Friday?
Yeah.
And what childcare looks like and what different things are, that will be included in the email.
Okay.
As soon as things are finalized to let people know.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Dan.
Um, so I just, a couple of ideas possibly, like instead of having freshman sports, doing like an ancient mural, offering a mural sports, more along those lines so that there isn't the busing cost, the referee cost, all of that type of a thing. Sponsors, I know Whitman Hanson Youth Soccer, we brought in quite a bit of money from sponsors. Um, I don't know if that's something other than for the, uh.
Scoreboard.
Scoreboard, you know? I mean, why not see about that? And I will say, while my kids played sports, I also had kids who did like chess club for their entire, and paid nothing. And I have no problem with 25 bucks a, a kid for, for activity type of a thing. I just don't think it's fair to penalize the sports kids because we're still paying an advisor to supervise, um, you know, these other things. But I'm not comfortable making a vote on this, honestly, at this point in time. I feel like there are a lot of things out there that I would like more answers on. Um, but that's just me personally.
Well, I, I need a motion. So, because we don't even have a motion on the floor. So have a motion so we can have more discussion?
Sure. Motion, motion to.
Accept the fees.
Accept the athletic fees as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Yes, Dan?
Um, I had a question about, um, Steve, when you mentioned parking and I, just because I have one driver.
Premium.
Premium parking, but just, my question's actually about general parking because I do a lot of drop offs here. And so I know there are a lot of student drivers. Do we charge for a parking pass for student drivers here?
No.
Is that something that we've explored?
Yes. In 2010. And depending on what you want to charge, we'll bring in, I have 300 spots over there and I have 200 spots in the lower lot. I mean, we could bring in revenue. I mean, if it's, you know, it could be $30,000 if people paid 100 bucks a pop.
Yeah.
And we have to, however, then, we'd have to staff the area to make sure kids are parking in the right spots.
Or even just having a tag, you know?
You, you.
We still need something.
We have it at Pembroke and it's.
It, it, it's sporadic. I mean, we used to do it in situ too. We just haven't charged for parking. But that's something that we could do. I mean, uh, we do charge $5 for the tag, which pays for the tags. But, um, we've talked about numbering it, we could do that. And, um, the lower lot, I would guess that we're not going to get a whole lot or trying to police it. Um, but the senior lot here, if we pay for that. And then again, we're targeting a, a certain group of kids. So, you know, nothing is great. But I understand.
Um, shoot, I had another thought. It's all right.
Okay. All right. Well, let's move to the vote then.
Um, oh, I did remember. I'm sorry. Is that okay though?
Go ahead.
Um, the other thing is I only, again, as a, as a parent of high school students, I think that the registration is our process already signed up. So my guess is if this does get approved, there may be some parents who have already gone through that small registration process and potentially paid the current fee structure. So there might be.
Could be. I'm not sure.
Okay. So that may be something we need to like manage for them. That's it.
Okay. All right. So I know we're not thrilled, but all in favor, raise your hands, please. Okay. And opposed? Okay. So one opposed. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And we'll keep, I'll keep you up to date in, in.
Maybe things can change.
In August, after the athletic night, I'll have Bob in September give out a report of where we're at and then the, the structure of how we're collection. And thank you for all your feedback on that. Uh, graduation, graduation, we graduated, seems like forever ago now because school's out. Um, great night. Um, weather held up really well. We graduated 234 seniors on Friday night and 12 community evening school, um, students the night before on Thursday. Uh, thank you all for who attended. I hope you got to see, um, the, the work of, of everyone in the community as those students progressed across the stage in both of those ceremonies. Um, and it was, it was good. Parents liked it. We got out of there in a, in a good amount of time. Um, kept our speeches short and I think it was meaningful for all. So, um, update on town meetings. Uh, last Tuesday, I went to the Hanson Select Board meeting, um, where the town, uh, the select board voted 4-0 to put the town meeting on, uh, on June 25th. Uh, they voted 4-0 to support, I believe it was to support using free cash to make up the difference from the town meeting warrant article that was passed on, I don't think it was May 2nd or May 6th.
Which town was that?
Hanson, in Hanson. Um, and the, uh, using free cash was endorsed by the chair of the finance committee as well. Um, so town meeting is Wednesday, the 25th here at 6:30 PM. We need 100 people to have a quorum. I have childcare in the cafeteria and I also have, we, since we talked about athletics, the captain's council will be doing something in the gym that night, uh, for ages four to 12 year olds. This is going to go in my email. Free, uh, National Honors Society and Captain's Council, they'll have arts and crafts. Um, they'll have king of the court and interactive games in the gym. So if you don't want to go to the Y, little, little kids, you can go 12 year olds, parents, bring your kids. Don't shoot around with our captains, uh, and our student leaders. So I'll get that out as well. Uh, but I'd need 100 people for a quorum and we need that budget. Otherwise we're right into a 112. Uh, Whitman Town Meeting was the next day and it was, uh, interesting. There was a lot of back and forth about police and fire and some motions on the floor, uh, to support folks. Um, thankfully, um, the regional school budget was amended and passed as presented from the school committee's assessment. Um, I think almost unanimously, I didn't hear too many, I don't think I heard a nay. It was overwhelmingly to support it, even with the reductions that I said, like I said, hurt us. Um, I, I'm committed to working with both towns early on next year to see, uh, where we can go. Um, I also hope that what was spoken at town meeting and what I've heard at Hanson is, uh, equal cuts across the board. Um, the district is cutting 1.75. I want, as the superintendent's, an I statement, I'd like to make sure, and the cuts that were presented at town meeting were, are, are real, um, because ours are real. And, and I'll follow up with that and I can, we'll talk about that from now on, but I hope they're real.
Can I just make a comment to that? I think it's important and as July 1st is a few weeks away, the towns are going to get free cash. And so we learned in Hanson last year that they made cuts to support the town, that they made cuts in the town to support the school budget. And then in October, when we had our special town meeting, all of the free cash that appeared, they reinstated the cuts that had happened. That's the major difference between our budget and the police, the fire, the council on aging, the library, all those other town budgets is when free cash becomes available, they can choose through town meeting to appropriate that money to ref- refill those services. We don't have that opportunity to do that. And I think that that's a really important piece of this that hasn't been brought up. Um, but if people just need to know, um, that. um, but people just need to know, um, that, that, we saw it happen in Hanson last year. Oh my goodness, we're going to lose all these people at town hall, the transfer season, and it was August and September, and then October, everything was back to normal. And it wasn't that bad. Um, and so I just, I, I will be, I can only speak to Hanson, but I will be very discouraged if that happens this year, right? Because to your point, we're being asked to cut close to $2 million to our budget, and saying that everybody in the town is making sacrifices, but if all of those sacrifices only last for two and a half months, are they really making sacrifices? And that's a concern that I have, and something we need to keep in mind when we look to our budget next year.
I just want to clarify, so you're saying the police can make a cut, the DPW can make a cut, so we, we all think we're making cuts, and then after it's all passed, they can go grab free cash and?
In October, that's what they did last year. Remember the transfer season?
I do remember.
And then in October, we were like, let's use free cash to open it back up again.
But we can't, we can't touch,
Special Town Meeting.
Can they give us that free cash?
Yeah.
They could, but they're not going to. I get it, I'm just saying, that's, that's as shady as it gets.
So, so my, my comment again, and I'm, I'm putting my trust in the TAs that I've talked to and the chairs. We've made 1.7 million dollars of cuts. We just increased user fees for our students.
Yeah.
Um, I, I've talked to the, I mean, I've seen the cuts on paper, I just want to make sure, and I, I'm putting my trust in again.
Right.
And I'm publicly saying that, I'm going to watch and talk and see what happens. They've asked for a lot of collaboration, I want collaboration.
Yeah, that's the big, the big word, so we'll see if it's, we collaborate.
Well, it will be remembered in the following year if they do.
Sure will.
Okay.
And last year, um, I know we were not in such dire straits, but we cut, was it eight positions from the district last year?
Five.
Five positions from the district last year that we did not get back with one free cash.
Hold on, no.
Right.
Nope. Anything, we've lost over hundreds, um, over the last, I want to say 15 years, positions, um, that never have come back, which, you know, people don't understand, because, you know, people still, or like this year, a lot were able to keep their jobs because people retired, or people left, they chose to go somewhere else, or they were a long-term sub, different things like that. And I explained that, too, um, earlier, that you're going to see people, new people coming in. But that's because we need a chemistry teacher, we need the English teacher up at the high school, you know, these are positions that we have to have, unfortunately. So, you know, I, I just wanted the townspeople to know, yes, you're going to see some new people, but we still lost 23 positions. You know, we still lost those positions, they're not coming back. You know, we can only hope, but we also are hoping for foreign language and robotics and stuff, and that didn't happen.
Stephanie.
Um, I just want to say, at the Whitman Town Meeting, prior to the Whitman Town Meeting, the selectmen did come out and say that they were taking, they decided to take money out of the ambulance fund in order for Whitman to not lose police and fire, which is great, but they found an alternate source of money, which is not something that, no, nobody came to the rescue for DPW, nobody came to the rescue for the schools. So I just want to point that out, is that there is not,
It's not equal.
There's not the same value, I guess, put in some places. And to your point, Beth, I would love to see on the school district website, how many positions have been lost over the past 15 years, and keep a running tally.
Yeah.
Because people aren't seeing it, and they really need to understand. We, we have not been able to increase anything at all, and we've lost.
Yeah, the only thing we were able to do was like pathways, but that's because of grants.
Grants, yeah.
And it really didn't, it's not, it's, it's not adding positions yet, yet. I mean, it will at some point, as we grow it. So that's town meetings, again, next Wednesday night, it's really important here, it's 6:30 uh, PM. Um, in your packet, and I left these, the principals obviously aren't here to speak to these, we started this a couple of years back, that, uh, the approval of, of improvement plans, we'll have them approved, their, their plans by individual buildings, uh, for next year, approved by the school councils that are appointed, or volunteers are elected in, um, at each school. They're good plans. If you have questions for those principals, I will bring them in in August or September, and actually give you an update on where they're at. Uh, but these are all wants to for next year, and I think they stick with the strategic plan, they're well-written. Uh, the elementaries are kind of, you're going to see some similarities, because as an elementary, we're doing the same thing, the middles are the same, and the high schools the singleton. So I'm just looking for a motion to, uh, to approve the school improvement plans for 25, 26.
So moved.
Second.
And if I need to, I can answer general questions, but building specific, I'd rather direct them to the principals and bring them back here if need be.
Everybody, Karen, all in favor? Okay, unanimous?
Thank you. Uh, in your packet, too, from a couple of weeks ago, is just in George's, uh, George's in San Francisco right now on vacation, enjoying some time. He gets to see Raphael Devers in a uniform on Saturday night. Uh, he's a little excited about that. Uh, but he provided a facilities update of what they're doing in facilities and, and technology over the summer, and the amount of work orders that we have closed this year, um, through operations and facilities, that, that both departments are very busy, making sure that the buildings are ready for, for, um, for the fall. And I'll announce a time that we will have our opening school tour, um, before school opens, uh, the, usually the Thursday before school opens, um, in August. But just as an FY, this is what the guys do and the, and the women do in both departments, in facilities and operations, and this is outside of SJ Services. SJ Services are, are our custodial crew, uh, they do the cleaning and, and very, very, very light maintenance. Uh, this is our, our maintenance folks and our technology folks. So that's just a reading item, and again, if you have questions, send them, send them off to, to Mr. Farrell. Another piece, um, so I, I think Kara mentioned it, and then Rosemary mentioned it at a meeting about the job descriptions of the treasurer and, and secretary. So we went back into our policy, and our policy is, is very outdated, um, regarding the secretary and treasurer. We actually have two folks that are employed by the district as the treasurer. Marilyn Thompson, uh, is our interim treasurer. Uh, we ended up hiring a treasurer in 2013 or 2014, when we realized we needed checks and balances within the district. Somebody employed by the district to make sure that the business manager, uh, was not dealing with all the, all the cash and, and the, and the books. There was a checks and balances. So we hired a treasurer, and the school committee policy necessarily wasn't updated. Uh, Jen Cruz is your secretary for your school committee, um, and takes the minutes, takes the notes, posts the agendas. So I reached out to the Mass Association of Regional Schools, uh, Steve Hemmon, people around the table might know Steve, they might not know, he worked, he worked with us on the regional agreement in 2018, but he's my go-to guy. And he's like, yeah, your treasurer is an employee who, um, checks and balances, and it shouldn't ever be a school committee member because they're volunteers, and somebody can't be, you know, take a salary if you're on the school committee, and the district needs or, needs a treasurer. Same thing about the secretary. And then Beth reached out to, to MAS C about best practice around what the, um, school committee dynamic might look like with chair, vice chair, clerk, secretary, whatever.
Yeah, I, I spoke to Sean Costello, and, um, what MAS C recommends for all school districts is a chair, vice chair, and a clerk. So I said, well, what does your clerk do? And he said, the clerk basically takes notes if the secretary is not able to. Um, there is no, uh, treasurer or any of that, because you're paying now somebody to be the treasurer. You're paying somebody to be the secretary. So, um, that's what MAS C recommends, no other positions, and they, uh, he couldn't believe that we have all the positions that we have. Um, he said, that's not done. He said, your, your policy needs to be revamped. Um, so whoever goes on the policy committee is going to have to change that, because those jobs are now done by professionals who get paid, those, that, those positions. So, yes, Stephanie?
So I, I have no problem with there not being a treasurer or an assistant treasurer, but I have a problem with, though, is, and according to MASK, the, I mean, we have to sign warrants, right? We came in early, we signed warrants. They have to be reviewed.
Mm-hmm.
And it specifically states, the warrants must still be reported on the school committee agenda following such signing. The law specifically states, this provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of a non-compliance with this section. Members are urged to work with their administration to create a process in which warrants can be reviewed with care, and such questions they may have can be answered.
Yes.
I will say that before I came on to school committee, and, um, Mrs. Hill and Ms. Byers actually were coming in and reviewing the warrants, they would go, I have taken over that spot that Ms. Byers was doing, Mrs. Conley and I, or Ms. Hill and I come in for two, three hours every single week to review old warrants, ask questions, sticky notes galore everywhere, no answers ever come back to us about some of this stuff. But we're finding things that we do have legitimate, I think, questions about.
Okay, so I want to address that. So, um, sticky notes sometimes are hard to understand, so I think it'd be a great idea if, that they're listed on a paper, um, with a specific date and, you know, what, what warrant it is, and what it is, and then it can be presented to, um, Jeff or Jen, um, to get all your questions answered, I think, because I think they didn't, I, I, personally, I didn't realize that, I thought you were going to come back with those questions, not, and those sticky notes were for you, so I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding of that.
No, that's,
So I think it would be a great idea if it just,
The process needs to,
Yeah, and as far as the warrant thing, yes, that's something that Jeff and I have talked about, um, you know, as far as, uh, the whole committee needs to vote on the warrant and stuff.
So what, what I'd like to do is this, it's kind of similar to what we just did today. The warrants are available for signatures prior to a meeting, after a meeting, and anybody can come in at any time, but they'll be available a half an hour before a meeting to, to review the warrants as we go forward.
That's, okay, but the, I guess, my concern is that, and that it does, it, I mean, according to what I'm reading, we actually need a, to report out on what it is that we have signed for warrants as far as, you know, like, you know, we, we've been renting some big equipment, right? I mean, that's,
We can't report on every single thing that's in the warrant. I mean, that, I don't think they, I don't think they expect that. It's that fat. I mean, I can't, we don't have the time in a meeting to,
So what I might recommend or suggest is that on the policy subcommittee, you review the policy around warrants.
Yeah.
And look at that and see what's amenable, using, using, you know, Stephen, who's been in another district, th- this is what I've learned through the eight years that I have. We've had three people sign a warrant, we've had one person sign a warrant, we've had multiple people sign warrants. So we can establish a policy or a, a, a process in a policy that will make it equitable to everyone on the committee to make sure that feedback is taken.
And we also had, we had a warrant subcommittee, people who were actually on the committee to sign the warrants. But then, of course, that got a little bit problem when people couldn't make it to sign them and stuff, so that became an issue.
So I'd recommend that to go to the policy subcommittee.
Yeah, so, the policy committee's going to be busy, so, yes.
Steph, will you read that again? The part that you, is that a, is it a recommendation, a rule, or a law?
No, so, um, according to the Mass Association of School Committees, there was a frequently asked questions page that says, does the school committee have to approve the warrants before they are paid by the city or town? And the answer, part of the answer, and I mean, there's Mass General Law and stuff, whatever, but, the warrants must still be reported on the school committee agenda following such signing.
Okay.
The law specifically states, the provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of a non-compliance with this section. And then later on, it says, members are urged to work with their administration, create a process.
So the signatures are the, the approval.
Yes.
Right.
But we are not putting them on the agenda?
No, we can report out on it.
We can report out on it, and I'll talk to Sean, too, see what other, you know, to help the policies to, with the policy committee, to see what, how other places do it. How do they condense?
Why did we get rid of the, uh, the warrant committee? I know on my first year, I was on it.
Yeah, um, I think because,
It was hot.
Some people,
If there are only three signatories on it, and one person can't come,
Can't come, that's a problem.
It's a problem.
Yeah, people aren't getting paid sometimes.
And that, and that becomes the issue, and,
Right, payroll won't go up.
And payroll won't go up. So we opened it up to any member of the school committee.
Got it.
And again, the law specifies, too, that you, you can designate one person to do that. That's a lot of responsibility on that person. So, um, during COVID, we had that. There was one person that was coming in to sign it, because that person was available. However, um, that's why we got away from the warrant subcommittee, uh, because now you're bound to come in no matter what.
So, yeah, the policy,
Policy subcommittee can absolutely get that.
Can work on that, too.
Prioritizing.
Yes.
So, so we're paying somebody to be a treasurer,
Yes.
Whereas other school districts have it as part of the,
No, 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 no. Everybody has a paid treasurer now, especially, yeah, they don't have the positions. They only have chair, vice chair, and clerk.
So, so we are also not a municipality?
Right.
So I don't know what the town of Canton or Situ, if they have a treasurer, the treasurer also has a license. So if someone wants to be a treasurer here, you have to be, have a Massachusetts treasurer license to be able to do that. Um, so I don't know if, if the treasurer in Whitman signs the warrants for payroll for, you know, the police department, you know what I mean? I don't know the interworkings for, in East Bridgewater, if the town treasurer is there checks and balances.
I think it is.
Through the business,
I think they do.
I also have, um, a business manager, assistant superintendent for business or employer, employee with title of similar import with responsibilities similar to those of a town accountant shall be subject to Section 52 of said, Chapter 41, and shall not hold the office of treasurer. So that's why we have a separate, and has treasurer.
That's right.
Which is great.
That's why, that's why it went in, because they, they found that, oh, we don't have a treasurer, we need to have a treasurer. So that's when in 2013 or 14, they said, oops.
And I don't know how long the town, the district was not having that.
Are we budgeted for that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a part-time person.
Yeah.
Could it be someone, could it be added to someone else's responsibilities?
No.
It, it would be, they would have to have the license.
Yeah.
So I, I, to, to say yes, I could do, have a teacher do it. I could have somebody outside of,
If it was someone who could do it and get a few extra bucks.
But the licensure piece is important, and it's, it's more like a three-day-a-week job.
Okay.
And they got to know their stuff.
Yeah, and they handle it.
Because where we go through with the, the problems we had with the auditors and everything else going on, you really need to have somebody who knows this stuff.
Just something we wanted to bring up, because, and, and people are welcome to come up and do those, and I, I just need those sticky notes on a piece of paper, so we can answer those questions.
That's fine, I'm, I'm happy for us to create, this is my whole goal for this year, is to create as many policies as we can for, for how things are going.
Yeah, we, I don't know why that, those policies were never looked at, I think because it wasn't, no, it wasn't an issue or anything, I don't know.
So we did a policy review in 18, and that policy was not reviewed in 18, because we sent everything to MASK. And if you look at our policy manual, in 18, most things were updated, that one was not.
Okay.
So we'll pick, again, policy, we have some, we still have some from last year that So we'll pick, again, policy, we have some, we still have some from last year that we have to pass, first reading and second reading, so we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Okay?
Great, thank you.
Stephen, you ready to rock?
Oh, Stephen, before you start, I just want to update, because I talked about doing operational procedure type thing, and Steph asked if we could have it today to have form a committee. But what I would like to, what I have asked Sean Costello when I talked to him the other day, could he send some, you know, procedures from other places so that we can all look at? So I will send, as soon as I get them, I will send them to everybody so everybody can look them over and then say, are you interested in forming a committee or do you want to do it as a whole committee come the fall that we, and do it that way? But I'd like to see what other places do and how they do it. I mean, we have these, but this is for the, basically for the meeting. So these, he said to incorporate in, but, you know, we need some other procedural things that need to be done. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I hadn't forgotten, I knew the things we needed to do.
Yeah. There are the Mass roles and responsibilities. There's a protocols worksheet on how we do business. There's protocols of best practices for effective school committee meetings. I found all of these online.
Yeah.
And on Mass's website, there are actual other samples.
Yeah, and I asked him to, you know, to send them to me so I can make it easier to send to you guys, so he will do that. So I'm just waiting for those to come through. As soon as they come through, I will send them out to everybody. Sorry, Steve.
No problem, thank you. So what I have provided for you tonight is a request for a vote of transfers within our operating budget. So we're moving money in between lines, we're not lowering or raising the budget at all. So each of the lines, you'll, there's three columns to the right. The original appropriation is what was originally voted, the transfers adjustments, so a positive number there is an increase to the budget, a negative number there is a decrease to that line, and then the revised budget is that third column. On the very last page, you can see that it totals out to zero. Happy to take any questions. This will allow us basically to clean up all those negative numbers that we saw through our quarterly reports throughout the year.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the line transfer items.
I second it.
Any questions with Steve? Yes, please.
Stephen, thank you very much for these. How do we know where that money comes from for a particular line? Is there something that goes with this?
Not yet.
Okay.
Just because the year hasn't completely ended yet. So I didn't want to hold myself to, you know, pull in exactly from a specific location. It does balance in terms of, you know, each of the differences, but once we close out the year and I do my quarter four report, you'll be able to see exactly the lines in terms of where everything came from.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's all.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor of accepting? Okay, unanimous? So, as we said, I want to skip to North River and Reeds.
Yep.
Because those are automatic.
Yeah.
North River and Reeds, Jeff has to be the rep. So we just have to approve Jeff as the North River and Reeds collaborative representative.
Need a motion?
Motion will prove.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, so did those two. All right, so then, the operations and capital subcommittee, who would like to be that? We'd like to have three people on each committee, or more if you want, but.
What's it entail?
Operations and capital subcommittee usually meets before our meeting here, usually at 5:30.
Every other month.
Every other month, not, it's not monthly, so.
To discuss?
At that, all the capital items that's going to be going on.
Facilities and.
And facilities.
The sheet that explains the.
Yeah, to make it easy, didn't it?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so they, we, you know, we'd like more than two people, so.
Three, four, five is.
Yeah, great, okay. TJ? And, okay, Stephanie? Stephen? Okay. All right, and it's, okay? All right.
Perfect.
Okay. Policy subcommittee, as you've heard, there's a lot of work happening, so.
When is the, when is the policy that's up to, that's up to the committee?
It wasn't, I've been on it, it hasn't.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll go on it again.
You want to go on here too? Okay.
Great.
All right, so good, we have four. All right.
So negotiations, we just have B, C, and D.
But we already had people on those, I don't know if they.
We didn't start, so I mean, so it could be the same folks.
I didn't ask Rosemary if she still wanted to stay with B. I should have asked her today when I text her back.
When Rosemary took on the slot that Dawn had, she said that she would come off of B.
Yeah, she did, yes. But I didn't know if she still, so.
B, B is administrators, and I'm doing B. C is secretaries, and Nikki and George are doing C. And D is paraprofessionals, and Nikki and George are doing D.
I believe I was on B, correct?
You were on B with.
You were on B, so you want to stay?
Yeah.
I thought I was C and D. I thought that one of them was.
How many do you need?
Two.
Two, one or two. B is pretty easy because it's a small group. It's not, Unit A drives it.
Yeah, so does anybody else want to do Unit B?
I would do it if, you know.
You want to join me?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's get them.
Okay, and C? C, Kara? Okay, anybody? And I was going to do, which one with you? That one with you? I don't remember either. Do you remember?
C, just C as.
C, secretaries, admin assistants.
Secretaries. And D, the A pairs. Did you want to do both, Kara? Or you want to just do one? Does anybody else want to do any of them? Negotiations?
I'll do the Ares.
Want to do D?
We haven't, we haven't, I mean, we can meet after school. When we met with A, we were meeting with, you know, 12 people. B is two or three. So we've done it at different times. We're flexible. C is, again, admin assistants, it's a smaller group. There's only seven admin assistants. And D, there's 100 paraprofessionals, but only two representatives plus Cindy and Kevin.
And you'd anticipate that's the summer?
Could be, we probably won't.
Probably not till the fall.
Probably not till the fall with that. I might not go B this summer.
Yeah, so I'm, I just don't, I don't want to overcommit.
They'll sit.
On availability.
So you do C, Steve do D, and I'll hop on.
I can do D too if.
You want to do D, right?
If Kara doesn't want to do it.
Thanks.
Not that I know of, it's just I know.
Kara, I'll do C with you.
Okay, perfect, thanks, Beth.
All right, so we got two for each, great, super.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Student advisory council, that wasn't listed on that, I didn't know if that was something.
Because at the last meeting, George wanted to do it and I said I'd like to do that. So, because I'm not on any of the other committees. So I'd like to personally do that since I have the availability now to be able to come to school during the day, so. Pilgrim area collaborative representative. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Would you like to accept this position again?
Absolutely.
All in favor of Mr. Boyce?
How can you not?
Unanimous. He wants to do it, he can have.
He's the best.
Yes, it is.
Public comment.
Okay.
Pope.
Do I have?
Anybody for public comment?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
Thank you.
Steph's on it, at least, who's Steph's?
Dawn Byers, 20 Russell Road in Whitman. I prepared a couple of notes on governance and policy, so I was glad to hear some talk about policy tonight. I do want to follow up on what Ms. Blackman said about town meeting in Whitman, though. I do have a comment that, how many years do we need to see this before we realize this is what the towns do? They come back in the fall. So Ms. Sniffin mentioned it, they came back last fall. And this committee didn't stand firm on the budget. You decided to cut it. So I don't know how many years you need to continue to see that, just needed to reiterate that. As far as my notes, some things that were not on the agenda tonight, as far as in your purview of governance and policy, is the superintendent evaluation. So last fall, the superintendent made goals of two-year goals. However, your role and responsibility is an annual evaluation. Haven't seen that. The audit, we saw a draft of that a few months ago, but the FY22 final audit, not presented yet. FY23, FY24, no update. Policy subcommittee has not met since February 2024. That's the last agenda on the website. So that's what I'm going by. There was a motion at our meeting on December 11th of 2024 to send two policies, curriculum and instruction, and network access policy to the subcommittee for signatures regarding the agreement forms. Policy subcommittee never met. So there is a motion for this committee to still review those. Also, a policy of this committee is setting the budget. I know that you did have an approved budget even after the overrides failed, because this committee never voted a contingency on that budget. Contingency was voted at the town level, not by this committee. If you go back to the SOS override, this committee voted for a contingency of an override at that time. So I know at the time, Ms. Hill provided you with case law and it was ignored. I think that's proper governance that's not being followed and it's troubling. So you really didn't need to vote a new budget on June 11th. And in fact, at that vote, in my opinion, has no legal standing because it wasn't a binding motion. I say that because at the time, committee member DeGravio pointed to the chart, pointed to a number and said, I make a motion for that number. Mr. Boyce also made a motion for a number. Motion wasn't pursuant to any chapter, section, Mass General Law, as it's very particular when we set the initial budget in March. So I'm a little concerned about the governance in that setting, that motion. If you do believe that that motion was legal two weeks ago, what you did was vote a budget with absolutely no supporting line item. We didn't see any line item budget. What I saw was a blank check of over $60 million given to the superintendent. Don't know how it's going to be spent, maybe there's cuts, maybe there's not, maybe it's coming from other departments. But your one responsibility is budget, fiscal oversight, and I don't see anything riding on how that's going to be spent right now. A strong leader of public education would know exactly the number of staff needed and where they're needed. Yes, people may be moving around, they may be filling in other spots, but the budget determines what is needed by this committee and the superintendent determines how to staff that. Yesterday, I spent time up at the State House. I did advocate for a House bill and a Senate bill, acts related to school start times for middle and high school. So there are people out there who are interested in this. When I gave testimony about the start time here, Senator Lewis's reaction, which he doesn't typically, you get two minutes, you speak, you walk away, and you move on, he said, that is shockingly early. Whitman Hansen, Will, met last month, I attended that meeting.
Not to interrupt, but it's been four minutes and you're supposed to be three minutes, so.
Oh, okay. My closing comments then would be about policy changes and the school improvement plan. You spent a lot of time talking about athletic fees tonight and not a single question on the school improvement plan. So I'd encourage you to look at your governance and policy of BFDA, which is about school councils and the school improvement plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Jen? Back up.
This is really unheard of for me to speak two times. Jen Roback, 879 Bedford Street, Whitman. I just want to put it out there that my son has gone through the special education program here, and I understand, because I am a teacher in another district, so, and I'm a special ed teacher in another district, so I understand what is being asked of a lot of these teachers and they're taking a lot on, on their own in terms of financial means of funding things within the classroom that you don't even realize are happening. I know in my own district, I'm funding the apples that we're using to use in science projects and the pumpkins so that they can feel the pumpkins, and all of those little things add up on these teachers' budgets that are their own personal budgets.